We are going to begin, this is our regular city council meeting with a roll call.
Aubrianna.
Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Blah.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to have, will stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing afterward.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will now have an invocation, if you could stay standing, from Reverend Emil Parafinuk. I think that's close, I hope.
Very close.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our beloved city of Pocatello. We seek your guidance and blessings upon our distinguished council members and all the residents of this community. We are mindful of the diverse faiths and beliefs that enrich our city, and we ask for your wisdom to lead us in unity and mutual respect. We remember the teachings of Pope Francis who reminds us, "A little bit of mercy makes the world less cold and more just." May we embody this mercy in our decisions and actions, striving always to make our community a place of warmth, justice, and inclusivity. We also draw inspiration from President Russell M. Nelson, who said, "I plead with us to work together for peace, for mutual respect, and for an outpouring of love for all of God's children." May this spirit of cooperation and unity guide us as we work together for the common good of all Pocatello residents. We honor the Shoshone Banok tribes whose rich cultural heritage and deep spiritual connection to this land remind us of the importance of harmony with nature and respect for all creation. Let us learn from their beliefs and traditions, fostering a community where all are valued and respected. We extend our prayers to our brothers and sisters, to believers of different faiths, and to those who do not profess any faith. May we all find common ground in our shared humanity and commitment to the well-being of our city. Guide our deliberations today and grant us the courage to make decisions that promote peace, prosperity, and unity. Help us to put aside our differences and work together for the benefit of all. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. So, moving on to agenda item number three is our consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from April 11, 2024 work session. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of July 1 through 15, 2024. And C, construction board of appeals and review appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Matt Frankel to serve as a member of the construction board of appeals and review representing architectural and engineering trades. Matt's term will begin July 19, 2024 and expire December 31, 2027.
Madam President.
Council President.
Councilmember Cheatham.
Madam President, I've moved to approve agenda item number three, the consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Mangum, I think I heard first.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Lorick.
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number four is proclamations. We don't have any tonight. Agenda item number five is the calendar review. And council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. Council meetings, we have our July 23, 4 o'clock, a special city council meeting. 6 p.m., city council town hall meeting. August 1, 5:30 p.m., a council clarification meeting, and 6 p.m., regular city council meeting. Other events, the Southeast Idaho Senior Games continues through July 20. July 24 at 11 a.m., the grand opening celebration and ribbon cutting for the origami art display in the Pocatello Regional Airport Terminal. July 30 and 31 at 6 p.m., the Montana Shakespeare in the Parks will be presenting Hamlet and The Winter's Tale at the ISU Quad. Performances are free to the public and are sponsored by the Pocatello Arts Council. August 3, Summer Sizzler Fun Run. Contact the Parks and Recreation Department for more information. The municipal band concerts on Sunday evenings from 7 p.m. to 8 p.m. that continue through August 4. The concerts have been moved back to Lower Ross Park Band Shell, and the concerts are free to the community. The open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continues. And due to the extreme heat we're experiencing, the following city facilities will serve as cooling shelters to those in need. The hours are City Hall Thursday and Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. At the animal shelter Friday and Saturday from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. and closed on Sunday, and pets are welcome. Marshall Public Library Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. and closed on Sunday. And we will move on to agenda item number six is our public hearing. I need my sheet. Okay. Pocatello Downtown Historic District Design Standards. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding the proposed update to the downtown historic district design standards. Council may wish to adopt the proposed document by resolution. And that's fun. I declare the public hearing open. So first, we're going to hear from the applicant. Well, applicant and staff in this case are kind of one and the same. So we'll hear from Jim Anglesey first and then the second person.
Good evening, members of the council. Jim Anglesey, long-range planner for the city of Pocatello. We have here today our consultant that's worked on the design standards, Kirk Huffaker, and he'll kind of present kind of the summary of what they are and what they entail, and then we'll answer any questions afterwards, but I'll yield my time to him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening, council members. Thank you for your time on the agenda. Appreciate it. We've been working on this for over a year. We were in front of you at a work session a little over a month ago to discuss the standards and the ins and outs of them. Part of the reason we've been working on this for so long is because we want to get it right. We went through two rounds of public input and comment with a two-month survey that we had out there, collecting input from property owners within the downtown as well as the community at large, because really the downtown is everyone's business. And so we wanted to hear from the public at large as well. So we made sure that we had enough time to do those public engagement opportunities. The purpose of the standards is to provide clear and concise guidance to property owners as to the direction you can take your property when you'd like to do an exterior alteration. And the previous set of design guidelines, while good for their time, had really left a lot of gray area in the administration of the design guidelines for the historic district, but also gray area for property owners to really understand the process and what was involved in considering alterations for their property. And so this effort, which was funded in part by the state, was meant to clarify many things with the historic district and the process for altering a historic property in the downtown. I've been meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission many times to discuss the details of this, and they've reviewed it several times, as well as the staff here. Since the work session, we have received a couple of comments from the public, which have been incorporated into the document, as well as from staff. We also had a meeting between Jim, the Planning Director Brent, and myself to talk more specifically about signage, understanding how important signage is to downtown. And that has been clarified more specifically to give better guidance for signage and actually open up some opportunities for some different kinds of signage as well. So we spent a lot more time working on that section since the work session. With that, I'll wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah.
What potential changes have you made on signage?
There are a couple of additional types of signage we've added, including some backlit channel letters and a specific way to install those, whereas you don't impact the material, the historic material behind the sign as much as other options that could backlit some signage. So, and so we've added that. So that was not an option previously. And the, the way we don't want them to do it is to install individual letters where you have to penetrate, say, brick or stone or something like that. Each time you put in a letter, there are multiple penetrations into the masonry. And so that really provides protection for the building to not have as many penetrations into the masonry. So we've considered things like that when bringing up some of these signage options.
So can you compare those type of signs to the internally illuminated, you know, can type signs?
Yeah. The internally illuminated box light, you know, where you have a metal box and just a plastic screen, those are not as distinctive. You can find those really on any commercial strip in America and are less appropriate for a historic downtown area, whereas something like channel letters that make a sign stand out rather than just a, you know, flush-mounted sign does lend itself to being more historically and aesthetically pleasing in a historic downtown.
And the internally illuminated box can style, those are still, would not be allowed, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
All right, thank you.
I think they can still be applied for, but they're, they're not considered appropriate, and the commission has more reason to turn them down. So, so they're not disallowed, but, and you can still go through the process if you'd like to try to get it.
Right, I understand, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Cheatham.
One of the things we discussed during the clarification meeting was the period of significance. We have many buildings in our downtown that are not 1890s or early 1900s or mid 20th century. Those kind of signs were in existence when those, those buildings were built. So would there be exceptions then permitted?
Yes. I mean, the, the commission has the ability to make exceptions when they feel that there are appropriate reasons to do that. And so, you know, the, the standards are, while they give more guidance than the guidelines did, they're still not black and white where it's absolutely yes and absolutely no. There's still room for decision-making that could be left up to the commission in an application.
If I may, one more.
Yes.
Will implementation of these design standards cause an economic impact on potential development in our historic downtown?
I believe it should not, because, again, they are standards that are not black and white, that say you can only do this and you cannot do this. So there are, there is room in between for lots of different products to be considered.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So we will move on to testimony. But first, I need to ask, and maybe Jim, you would be the one, did you receive any written correspondence? Was any submitted for the record?
No, I didn't.
Yes, okay. And Madam Clerk?
No additional correspondence.
Okay, thank you. So we will take testimony from those supporting the application. Oh, yes. Anyone testifying will have a three-minute time limit. None supporting the application? Okay. Ask for, sorry, I'm reading all the instructions. Those uncommitted to the application. None? Okay. And those opposed to the application.
Hi, Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 82201. I'm only opposed because once they started doing the relight the night signs down there, I'm all about the stars. I want to see the stars. And I want to bring back the more natural type of environment. And so if there's going to be more lighting involving more artificial light, I oppose that. And I, I'm not understanding, is this just about signage-type things or are there other things? Because that's pretty much all that was discussed. And so I just wanted more information if there was other things besides kind of the signage issue. But that's my main concern. If it's going to bring in more artificial light for signs, then I'm strongly opposed to that. When you live up in the mountains and have the sun and, I mean, the moon and the stars, it can be like daylight out there, and it's gorgeous. And our children don't even know hardly any star can be seen down in town. Anyway, thank you for it.
Any others opposed to the application?
No.
Okay. Do we need any rebuttal? Or do you want to say anything additional? Okay. So we'll move on and close the public hearing. Do I need to do this again? Okay. There we go. That's the fun part. So I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Council President.
Councilmember Mansfield.
I would move that we approve agenda item number six, updating the downtown historic district design standards as outlined in agenda item number six.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Mansfield, a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubrianna, would you call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lorick.
Yes. Okay. And agenda item number seven, public hearing. This is on the proposed fiscal year 2024 July budget amendment. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. This is also a public hearing. I declare the public hearing open, and we will hear from staff.
Counsel, good evening. Gene Hill, Finance Department. Again, just, we're here to go over a budget amendment. Again, I just want to reiterate, budgets are estimates, and so from time to time, we always have to do these amendments, just like you would in your own household. So at this time, we are here to go over a $2.7 million amendment to sanitation's budget, which would take it from 12.7 million to 15.4 million, changing the entire city budget from 178 million to 180, 181 million.
Any questions for Gene? Nope, thank you very much. So we will go ahead and, oh, I don't need to do that yet. Testimony from those supporting the application. Testimony from those uncommitted to the application. And any testimony by those opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 82201. I'd like a little more information of what it's going for. And if I'm right, that it's just for the sanitation department. I'm trying to do all I can to have sanitation go away and just let everybody clean up their own block and take their own garbage to the dump so that we can reduce that amount on our budget and have the town cleaned up by block nicely and people taking more respectable responsibility for their own property and neighborhoods. It's not the government's job to be in the garbage business. There's dumpsters all around this town that reek. It's bringing in rodents and things. There's people that dump their personal garbage in other people's dumpsters. There's garbage all up and down the streets because the dumpsters are exposed and blow garbage everywhere. Not that I don't appreciate the service, it's just, it's not the government's job to be in the garbage business. And I was up in Idaho Falls one time last summer, and their alleys were spotless, their dumpsters were bright shiny yellow and clean. It was just so refreshing to go around their, their main part of town, their, you know, city center, and have it be clean and beautiful and stores that were uplifting. And I just thought, that could be here. You know, if we have to have them, then let's pick it up. But we don't need, again, I'm trying to re-inspire, let's get back to what our country was founded on, of independence and clean and honor and unity and helping each other and taking responsibility. Our children have no regard. Most don't have any regard, more anybody else. I walk all over the place. There's garbage everywhere, including syringes and alcohol and cigarette butts and condoms and tampon applicators. We've got to come back to why we have what we're at and turn it back around to where we came from. And that can be done, and garbage is one of the simple ones to do it. And yes, there's going to be a situation of commercial people needing something bigger, but there needs to be a standard then, that they're accountable to. Like, all the garbage along the fence line at Winco blows all over the place, everybody else's property. I've cleaned it up for people. So I'm not sure what this amendment is for. I'd like more information of why we're having to pay out even more. And to me, it needs to be auctioned off, all the equipment, and somebody private can buy it and go into a private business with a private owner, doing the job. And then we won't have to deal with having it come through the city budget and putting it back in the hands of the people. I mean, we pay three times just to get garbage to the dump. Anyway, I appreciate your service.
Thank you, Nikki.
In the name of Jesus.
Okay, any others opposed to the application? Gene, do you want, oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
It's okay.
Good evening, counsel. Heather Dislakun. I struggled about whether to speak opposed or neutral, because I'm kind of like right stuck in the middle between those two. Ultimately, I decided to speak opposed. Well, I recognize that just because you authorize this does not mean you have to spend it. And the reason why I did choose to speak opposed is because I, I believe that it's premature to spend this money at this time. I took a really good close look at the cost-benefit analysis that was shared with me through a public record request, and I realize I have a draft. But I'm concerned because this cost-benefit analysis, it seems incomplete. There's expenditures missing from here. I know I missed earlier the clarification meeting, and I know there was some talk about the sorting fee. I don't see that listed on here. Maybe it's under one of these other headings, but that's missing. The cost to insure the facility, that's missing. I like numbers, so I took the opportunity to put this in an Excel spreadsheet and added the formulas. And I changed, I changed one cell. And the one cell I changed was the labor and benefits, which right now is estimated with one personnel through 2040, one full-time FTE to run this recycling center. So I don't know how secure you are with that prediction that there's only going to be a need for one full-time employee, but if you just change that to two employees, you're getting really close to not breaking even. Even. You add a third employee in there, your numbers are into the negative, and you're on par with that third party, that third-party option. I really appreciate recycling. I was one of the first people when it first came out to pay that $5 fee to get that blue can. I love that my garbage can is like a third full or a half-full every week. I have neighbors that regularly use my garbage can because I have so much extra space in there. I don't want to see recycling go away. And I think most of this community feels that way. I just don't feel that there is enough information here, in this draft form at least, that, that clearly identifies the purchase option. Not only that, I would point out that there are some benefits to go in third-party. You won't be taking that property off of our tax rolls. Right now, the county has it appraised at a little over $1.1 million. We won't have to add insurance to cover that building, which insurance is missing from these estimates. And you won't have to pay for the maintenance and the upkeep of the equipment. So I just ask that you take that in consideration and possibly delay your decision until you have some better numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony opposed to the application? Gene or Tom, would you like to come up and answer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. So as to the first question, the $2.7 million for the amendment is to, for your consideration to purchase a bailing facility located at 3034 Garrett Way, as well as $700,000 for potential upgrades. We really don't know what those look like until we take, take ownership of that building if you choose. So that's the first part. Probably the easiest thing would be to take a minute and go through the timeline of how this, how this all played out, if you'll indulge me. So approximately mid-May, we were approached by the recycling center to tell us that they were closing June 1. It had, had been purchased by Republic Services from Western Recycling. Western Recycling owned the facility. Republic Services owned the bailing equipment, as well as the operations. They told us by June 1 that, that facility would be closed. They cited that the payroll was what was having, they were having problems with. They're a remote satellite operation. Their closest office is in Boise. They have to staff that with three people for OSHA requirements, as well as backfilling for vacations. And so three, three positions in that facility just did not make sense to them. They gave us an option for a third party that they had spoke to locally. We looked into that, talked, and made some phone calls. We feel that that is a very, very short-term solution. That's going to increase the cost of recycling quite a bit. So we feel that this third-party solution is not a solution at all.
Why is it short-term?
So the, the company that they had approached had no desire to bail in the past for lack of space. So they said that they would bail for the short term, but they were going to raise the cost quite a lot. To us, we feel like that that is not a viable option. There's too many question marks into that. And what it was going to do is, our recycling costs right now are about $120 per ton to recycle it. That would take our recycling costs up to $185 a ton. And so we started looking at other options of, of how we move forward. We felt that the short-term solution, if we We felt that the short-term solution, uh, if we go down that path, we're just going to be here again in six months talking about the same things. So we began compiling information, um, about taking over that facility. Um, Republic Service was, um, very eager to do whatever they could to help that situation along. Uh, we had to keep that fairly tight to the vest for a while because there was, um, employees working at that facility and we did not want, um, them finding anything out, um, through a newspaper or anything like that until we got closer to seeing if this, this works What it boils down to a lot, I guess, is we need to decide whether we're a community that wants to recycle or a community that doesn't. Um, our, our, uh, customers, uh, we have a 77% participation rate in curbside recycling. Um, I dare say it's probably the most used program in the city. The EPA's, uh, numbers right now say that about 32% of the population is recycling, so we are well above average. Um, we're well above the 2030 goal of 50%. Unfortunately, recycling's probably never going to pencil out. Okay? Um, so what we're looking at is how we can make the cost that the city pays cheaper. So to say that we're going to make money on this, we're probably not. But we never have and we probably never will with recycling. That's a decision we make as a community, whether we want to go down this road and, and take care of our environment and be good stewards of that. But what we can do is limit the amount of money that we are paying. And that is the option that we're moving forward where we feel that it does pencil out. Currently, right now, uh, the proposed rate, um, is about $185 a ton. If we go down this road, uh, we think we can get that per-ton cost down to 53, mid $50 per ton, uh, which is a third reduction. Um, we spend roughly $300,000 a year. We feel that we can, we can lower that by, um, $100 to $150,000 each year. Um, some of that is from commercial cardboard, so it doesn't always, um, the numbers don't pencil out perfect in the, in the scheme of it as far as, we can cut our curbside by a third, but our cardboard still only drops so much, so our overall cost is, is about in there. As far as insurance goes, our buildings are covered under a current insurance, uh, that doesn't really change. The one thing that we, we have working for us right now is that facility does roughly 200 tons a year or a month in curbside recycling, which works out to probably about four hours a day worth of work. Uh, so what we are proposing is we will have one operator over there all day, every day because it is a community drop-off and it will continue to be a community drop-off. And then during that time when the trucks show up to dump, so what happens is our, our trucks go out, they collect the curbside recycling, they go to that facility, they dump it on the ground. Recycling doesn't weigh a lot, but it's very fluffy. And so what ends up happening is you push it into a baler and you condense it into bales so that it's easily transported. So throughout the day, we get maybe six trucks of, of single-stream recycling as well as a couple of, uh, truckloads of cardboard from commercial accounts. So what will end up happening is we will be backfilling a position from our facility at 2405 Garrett Way, which is just down the street whenever any equipment is running. Um, we have currently a, a roadside cleaning program. We feel that we can use one of those bodies, uh, for half a day and, and then they can be out doing our clean routes the rest of the day. We feel like that until the tonnage that comes through that building increases exponentially, that we feel that, um, this one new position plus the backfilling of another operator is sufficient. Do we know what it looks like in 10 years? Absolutely not. Um, all we can do is our best estimates. But what we are looking at doing is potentially, uh, uh, beginning a commercial cardboard recycling program as well. We've had a lot of, uh, input from the community on, uh, from the business owners for ways to, uh, uh, recycle their cardboard. We feel that the more tons that go through there, the more that we bail, the, the better this works out. So I guess the big thing to realize on this is recycling's never going to make you money. But what we can do is we can help limit the amount of cost that it does. And for me, that's a pencil out for a win, so.
Tom, would you address the, um, there was a comment about some fees being missing or some costs being missing, the sorting fee?
Yeah, those are, those are on the, the spreadsheets. So you'll see that, uh, on the top of that chart, um, we have what we pay normally for recycling. These are the bailing fees that we'll be charging other, um, users that bring their single stream in, Chubbick for instance. We'll be getting 100% commodity rebate for all of the City of Pocatello's. Uh, we'll be getting partial commodity rates from the other users of the facility as well as the cardboard. Um, on the second line or the second grouping, you'll see that we've depreciated our baler, our forkless and our scales. We've added the facility maintenance, our labor and benefits, utilities. The MRF fee is, the MRF is called a material, um, recovery facility. That's where it is sorted. So those are the MRF fees, uh, for the City of Pocatello as well as the hauling fees, uh, to haul that, uh, material to Boise to the MRF where it is sorted. The other communities that bring their materials there, they will be billed directly through, uh, Republic Services for the hauling and the sorting of their particular, uh, curbside. Uh, we will just be charging them to bail it.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Tom?
That wasn't too long-winded.
Any questions for Jean? Go ahead.
Is that a comment or question slash comment? So essentially, uh, the idea here is to save recycling for the City of Pocatello, right? We're not looking to make money, we're just trying to salvage, um, the possibility of recycling. Also, uh, that's kind of a question, you're nodding yes.
So the dilemma we faced middle of May was, do we cancel recycling or do we move forward? Um, and that was a real decision. Uh, that was basically our only two options, we felt. Uh, the third-party option, uh, we feel in, in, our understanding and our data collection is not a viable option. And so, yeah, it was, it was either black and white, we stop recycling or we do something to save it.
So the other thing, um, us taking over this building, it, you know, removing it from the tax rolls and whatnot, potentially, what's the use of that building if we don't take it over? Because it's, it's suited for recycle or for, you know, whatever they do now sanitation-wise and garbage compacting and all that. So realistically, there aren't too many third-party companies that are probably interested in coming and taking over that building, correct?
Yeah, Western, Western Recycling are the, the, the people that own it and they're currently looking to retire. Um, they've been in the recycling business since the seventies and so they're, they're ready to get out of, out of that business.
So, so there's no one coming to save us, essentially, recycling-wise. So we're saving ourselves essentially, right?
Yeah, uh, what it boils down to is we're spending less money. And so, um, in my opinion, that's, that's a win.
I don't, I don't mean to make levity of the, of the, through my comments, but I'm, I'm really just, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, number one. And number two, I want to make sure that it's clear to everybody that we're, we're not in it to, to draw out revenue, but we're in it really to save a service that we're offering to our community, not only to the community, but to the, to the environment in general. And to make sure that we're being good stewards of the land that, uh, was given to us, uh, to, to govern.
Yeah. And, you know, we're always going to have the few naysayers that, that say this or that. We feel that this is a good move for the community as a whole. If recycling goes away, homeowners are going to have to decide what they do with, uh, the two, the two bins worth of garbage that they produce every week. Because if recycling goes away, so do the blue bins. And so now we start looking at, how are we going to throw away our garbage now? So we would have to go through and redo our rate study, readjust our, our can costs, but um, if, if that's the case, then it, it comes into you get another can at your house. And garbage, uh, collection is always going to be more than recycling because recycling is light. Uh, garbage, garbage collection is based on how much we can fit in a truck legally to drive to a landfill. So garbage collection, the pickup portion, is always way more expensive than picking up the recycling. The recycling where it gets you is, is sorting it out and reselling it through a commodity value.
So I have one more question, if that's right. I apologize. So the blue can versus the green can, how much are we charging people to get the blue can? Is it already tied into the service? Is it separate from the service? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so the way we've worked it, just for ease of, of, uh, understanding is we've rolled that into the rate. So when you, uh, get garbage, you have the opportunity to opt out or receive a, a blue bin.
So pretty cost-effective then, because if you, if it wasn't, if it was a separate thing, there'd be a whole nother charge that would be associated with it. And if we lost the recycling, then there's a whole nother.
Yeah, we would, we would, we just finished our five-year rate study. We go back and we recalculate how everything works and, and tune those rates back into that.
Awesome. Sorry for.
No problem. Counsel member Mansfield.
We have an ordinance in place that says we're the sole provider of sanitation services currently. Does that cover recycling?
Um, there are, there is a, there are some that are picking up, uh, commercial cardboard, um, but, uh, we have spoken to them, they have, they have no, really no interest in continuing that. And so, um, the ordinance, I believe, says waste hauling, it doesn't reference recycling at this time.
Does, does that cover, does waste hauling cover recycling, Jared?
No.
Should, should we make an ordinance that does?
Um, I, I think it's viable option, absolutely.
I have a follow-up to that. Why is it that they have no interest in continuing that? Is it because of the same situation that we're facing with the third-party and whatnot? Or is it just, they just, there's no?
They are interested in retiring to the Caribbean somewhere and selling out on, on all of that. So the closest recycling place we've got is, is Western Recycling and they're wanting out.
Counsel, do we have any other questions?
I just wanted to make one comment. I, I think our numbers show that our community really does want this program, they use it. We have, as you said, kind of, well, more than double the national average in terms of participation, so I think this is a, a great way to, to save that program and to be able to keep it and provide it to the people that want to have it. So I commend you on figuring out a way to do that. Thank you. Um, so I declare this public hearing closed and counsel, this item is before you, how would you like to proceed?
Isn't this one an ordinance?
Wait, 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 wait. I'm sorry, not this one.
There's an ordinance.
There's an ordinance later.
Consideration later.
So we are not acting on this one right now. Thank you. So moving on to agenda item number eight, city ordinance exception request, Pocatello Car Club. Counsel may wish to consider the following request by Pocatello Car Club, represented by Brad Andres, pertaining to the Pocatello Car Club Street Drag Event to be held at the Pocatello Regional Airport from 7:00 AM July 27th to 8:00 PM on July 28th, 2024. A, approve a temporary street closure of Fortress Street and Liberator Street from Grumman Road to Terminal Way during the event. B, allow an exception to city code 10.16.050, speed limits for city streets on Fortress Street and Liberator Street from Grumman Road to Terminal Way during the event. And C, allow an exception to racing on public highways as permitted under Idaho Code 49-14243 during the event. A temporary street closure request has been submitted to the Street Department for the temporary closure of Fortress Street and Liberator Streets. Approval may be contingent upon event parking plan approval by the airport manager. The event is organized under the direction of South Hills Raceway LLC and ambulance services will be provided by Power County Ambulance.
Counsel President?
Counsel member Mansfield.
Uh, I would move to approve the following request from Pocatello Car Club pertaining to the Pocatello Car Club Street Drag Race Event to be held at the Pocatello Regional Airport from 7:00 AM July 27th to 8:00 PM on July 28th, 2024. A, approve the temporary street closer, closure of Fortress Street and Liberator Street from Grumman Road to Terminal Way during the event. B, allow an exception to city code 10.16.050, speed limit for city streets on Fortress Street and Liberator Street from Grumman Road to Terminal Way during the event. And C, allow an exception to racing on public highways as permitted under Idaho Code 49-14243 during the event, all with the following conditions. One, airport manager approval of the parking plan. Two, ambulance services being provided by Power County Ambulance. And three, any other conditions listed in the Agenda Item 8 packet.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Mangum.
Madam President.
Um, and we have a question.
Before we vote, could we have some discussion and perhaps hear from Mr. Andres?
Yes.
If he's here? Yes, good.
Well, thank you for your time, everybody, I appreciate it. I think I sent you guys over an email.
Could you say your name, please?
What's that?
Could you just say your name?
Oh, sorry, yeah, this is Brad Andres representing Pocatello Car Club. I think I sent all you guys an email over, so you got a little bit of background, is that correct? Okay, I know some of you did, some of you didn't, because I could be up here for three hours talking, it's a, it's a long process, so maybe a better way to do it is go through questions, if you guys have some questions about what's going to happen.
Let's go ahead with that. Um, and counsel member Cheetham and then Nichols.
I have a couple of questions. Have the, the people who have businesses along these streets been notified that this event is going to happen?
I went and knocked on each one of them and they're actually excited for it. Um, it's going to be a Saturday, so they're all going to be closed and it doesn't hurt any access to any of them. We're going to close one road, I think it's one past Cessna, that if you're going down or racing down Fortress Street, you turn down, you come back around and we do, on the crossroads, we're doing double signs. So not, you first, when you see a crossroad going this way, you see a road close sign and then another one there. We're moving a road's close sign just back a little bit so he can access his business, even though he is closed on Saturday. And he said, he's all for it and I went and talked down to the, uh, to the larger business down there, I can't remember off the top of my head, but they're actually thinking about maybe even sponsoring it, they really like the idea.
If I could follow up.
Yes.
The note we have for it tonight says this will be from July 27th, 7:00 AM.
Right.
To July 28th on 8:00 PM.
Right, we're not going to go through the night, but we might as, well.
But that would be the next day.
Yes, we're going to do it Sunday. Um, we think we're getting enough response that we think it's going to need to be a two-day event to get all the racing in. So that's why we went ahead and did Sunday.
As a follow-up, I, as I mentioned in the clearance meeting, it's been a long time since I've been to a drag race, but in those events that I saw a long time ago, uh, there were barriers along the sides of the strip to protect spectators.
Right.
Is there any provision here for an errant car to cause a problem?
Yeah, so the insurance people require that, so if you're going to have the starting line right here, it goes out like this, nobody's allowed forward in there. So we're going to put candlestick barriers like out there and then as the guy's standing there overseeing the whole things, if he sees somebody out there in the field, he shuts it down, hey, get off there. So just nobody is allowed down. But we're not bringing jersey barriers or anything, it's just an off-limits area, nobody's going to be out there.
What will be the starting?
Say it again?
What will be the starting mechanism?
He has what's called a port-a-tree and it's just like the ones you would go to a racetrack and they run a, run a line all the way down and it goes, you know, just the standard, the lights go down when you go green and the computer kicks it in and when you cross the finish line, you know how fast you went.
Okay, and one last question, Madam May. What kind of cars are you looking? We've got some AA-fueled dragsters in our community. Are you looking for those kind of cars or what do you anticipate the top speed to be?
Great question, I appreciate that, saved me a lot of going over there and get to it. So the classes we're going to do, we're going to do street and that means anything legal on the street. And then we're going to do import because that sort of separates them and that's going to, just any import car. And then there's going to do what's a combination class, which means it's motorcycles or ATV side-by-side. So we're, they're trying to set it up that if you own a motorcycle, you're not going to race against a car. So those are separated. So those are separated. And then there also is going to be a pro class, so the real guys are going to show up. And it's caught a lot of attention just because being attached to Pocatello. Pocatello, from that racetrack, from that drag strip that was here years ago, still gets people's attention. So there's going to be some, what do they call, five-second guys that can go an eighth mile in five seconds. The real guys are going to be there as well. And the guy running the event, he's used to these. He's done this. He's been doing it for several years. And I also included in that email that he's been working with the district attorney over in Twin Falls County, I think. And so if you guys want to have any questions about that, he's available to take your questions. If you want to talk council member to council member type of a deal. So he's been doing it for a long time. The main thing I want to get to you guys. I'm not the one doing the race. I'm hiring the experts to do the race. I'm not the one sort of planning this whole thing. I actually came from a lot of different people, including Mike Tolman and some other guys that have been around here for a long time. So I'm sort of the in-between for the car community to you guys. So I'm, go ahead.
Do you have one more?
Is there any provision for repair of the streets if there is damage caused by these cars?
That was one of the questions that came up right away. And I called the insurance people on there, the ones that are covering the insurance. And I put in that email that there's $100,000 liability coverage for any damage caused by putting on the event. So I asked her, if they tear something up, I said $100,000. She said yes. So also the people that have a vehicle, if it's a street vehicle, and they also have their insurance if they crash into something. But I don't know if you guys have been out there, this area where I'm talking about. It's telephone poles and nothing else. That's, you know, it's the street and the telephone poles. And I also brought that up with Tom Tillis, and the guy who's doing it, just actually directly. Because it's going to damage the road, because I got my name out there. And what I'm after is being invited back. I want you guys to go. Yeah, of course, man. That was a really good thing for the community and leaving a bunch of mess out there. So I asked him, and he says he's been doing the same spot for four years, and the road's not damaged.
I thought the way they're going to treat the road at the starting line was very interesting, with water and Coke syrup.
Yeah. And they're going, we got, I put it in there, we're going to have a lot of water. I'm all about water because of the fire hazard. We're also going to have the grass mowed back for safety. And there's going to be water right there at the drag strip. And then there's also just going to be another 400 gallons available wherever it just needs to be to knock down dust. And then Kate Idaho Equipment is bringing out a 2,000 gallon water, 2,000 gallon water truck. So we got lots of water. And that's how we're going to, go back to that question. If somebody wants to burn their tires to get ready for it, there's water right there. Because when you have damage to the asphalt, it's from the heat. It's like putting a blowtorch on it. But if you keep the tires cool with the water, it's not going to, less chance of damaging the road.
We do have some additional questions. Councilmember Nichols.
I love the question, because I know this topic. Go ahead.
So do you have like a safety criteria, like with the drivers, you know, wearing helmets and harnesses? And is there a whole protocol for that?
Yes, I, well, it's not, and this all goes to the insurance people. They put it down. He gets the insurance. And if I remember the main things, of course, you have to have a seatbelt. You have to have your batteries strapped down. You do have to have approved helmet. I added something to it. I don't want any loose items, like the guy's carrying around his toolbox with a bunch of half-inch drive sockets in there if he does roll it. So I think it's pretty standard. And also they also going to sign a liability waiver before they do this. But that's the standard. I thought it was a little bit loose, but this is the industry standard for street drag. This is a common practice. It's happening all over. Just to give you an example, so a little more background. It's an eighth mile, so this will explain a lot. The average car in an eighth mile, like if you're getting up to go onto the freeway, this is very similar when you're sitting in your car. And I wonder what this thing will do. We've all done it, getting onto a freeway on-ramp. So most cars are going to go at an eighth mile, 70 miles an hour. That's most of these cars. The fastest that he's ever had a street car go was a Tesla Plaid at 120 miles an hour at that eight. And then a pro, the real guys, they're going to go at about five seconds and be at about 140 miles an hour. But another thing they do, this guy's trying to run a show, and he's worried about his reputation and safety. So any of those pro guys, before they go side-by-side, he's going to make them show that they know what they're doing. They just, you know, and you can usually tell right away if that guy's a pro.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
Told you I could go on for three hours if you let me.
Councilmember Mangum, and then Councilmember Mansfield.
Just to clarify, we all haven't done it. I haven't. I'm a law-abiding driver. I have not done that.
Don't say we all.
I have not been caught doing that. Sorry. Do you have an estimated number of like staff or volunteers who will be helping to put on this event? Or is it that guy who you're talking about? Is he facilitating all of that?
You guys are good. These are great questions. The people that are going to come over, they're going to bring darn near an army. When they first came over to look at, they brought like six guys to go look at all of it. And they're also really excited. And I've had people on my car club, I run the Facebook group Pocatello Car Club. We have about 2,300 members. I've had some people say that they want to help out. As far as running the event, I'm going to stand back and let the pros do it. I'm going to sort of, I'm going to be there, have people sign up. And I'm going to be involved with parking. So I think I can do it with me and my son, a couple of his friends, paying a little bit of money to help out. But those guys will take care. I can't give you the exact number, but they're showing up with a lot of people.
So I have a second one. The other question was on the parking plan.
Right, I want to bring that up.
Okay.
So with the guy, do you have, can you bring up that email that I sent over that has that picture? Because I just printed this out, and it's not a very good shot of it. I'm hoping you guys have.
It's in our packet. We have it.
Okay, so I went out there. Do you have the picture with me parking my car on the lawn? Yeah, so that would be ideal. Because what I liked about that spot is older people, wheelchairs, walkers, what have you, you're coming out, you're really close. We can have handicap parking where you can ride there. Because if you notice the thing, we have Piper Avenue all closed off. So, and there's going to be activity. So I don't want people having to drive through where the cars are going. I think it'd be really nice for them to park right there. And it's also where I wanted to put the porta-potties. So it's the same thing. It's pretty close to make it accessible to everybody. I drove around on that lawn area, and in my opinion, I think it's more than strong enough to handle a weakened parking. You know, a lot, something like at Ross Park or some other people you'll do an event, and they'll come in there and they'll park on the lawn. Or out there at more wellness complexes, they'll do a car show out on the lawn or another car show they'll do over there at where the Gate City Car Show was. Anyways, the lawn looked well-established, deep-rooted. I think you can handle it. There wasn't any low spots with water or anything like that.
That's, and we'll take your question first, but then I'm going to have Alan come up and talk about that because that was not the understanding of where the parking would be.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to do that first? Can you wait? Okay.
Because my question was going to be about the parking as well. So if we can, but he's the one that will be approving the plan.
We have other options for parking. I want to bring this up. I went over and talked to Avis, and if that one doesn't work, we have a backup. Avis has his parking over there, and I went and met with him. He really liked the idea, and he said there's no problem letting us use their parking. Just make sure that we don't block the pumps. So when I looked at that, that's a great place for people to park their trailers and to do called pits in between races. You want to go over and tune on your car or have your little shop. So I like that for there. But there is enough room there to park both the spect, on the Avis parking lot. The only, what I don't like about it is somebody having to walk so far down to the event. We can maybe do a handicap parking and let them through.
But Mr. Andres, because Alan Evans is our airport manager. He's the one that will be approving the plan. So I'd like to hear from him about where he'd like you to park.
So I think my concern with this is obviously the parking. On the map that I was given does not really show very big areas. And from what I'm hearing, there's going to be quite a few people around. And so I'm a little concerned. I don't want people to just park wherever they think they can find a place to park side to the roads. That could become an issue with an emergency response if we have cars on both sides of some of these roads out here. They may not be able to get through. In the map that I've got, number 10 is the areas that have been designated.
Can I see which one you have? Yeah, I've updated that one. I'm sorry.
And these areas, number 10, the larger one, is an area, as he mentioned, which is irrigated daily and mowed and has some expensive sprinklers in there, quite honestly. And so I'm a little concerned with, there is not really a curb cut or a direct way into that, other than coming off the entrance road down into a little, it's a little lower than the entrance road. So there's not really a great entrance or exit in that. And I don't think there's a great amount of depth for parking if the number of people show up that I think we're going to get at this. Number 10 on the other side to the north of that, or what I would call probably northwest, is just a small gravel lot. I believe we can accommodate some parking at the airport, but it's going to be just a little further away than that. There is a long-term parking lot on the west side that is an overflow lot that is probably within walking distance, maybe 50, 60 yards from this event. And that would be on a hard surface. They would just need it to be directed around to that lot. There's a lot of parking in there that probably more than would be needed, I'm thinking. The handicap access could be a little bit of an issue because of, you know, it wouldn't, you know, maybe the handicap we need to address in a different way. But I think we can talk about that and figure that out. But I am concerned, I'd just say I am concerned with parking on my grass areas. Those are watered each day. They're mowed, and they could be a little bit tender and soft. And I know if we put a few, I guess, food trucks and things on the edges, that doesn't concern me. But I think parking across those entire grass areas concern me a little.
And so in the motion, it, one of the contingencies for approval is that you will work with our airport manager on developing that plan. And Councilmember Mansfield, sorry. He's got a specific question. So is it for Alan?
Yeah, comment on parking. I think it sounds like the two of you will be able to work together to look for a solution. Alan, if you need to, as well as part of that parking plan, I think it would be very reasonable to get some cones or signage to mark off those areas that you're most concerned about people thinking they can park where you don't want them to. So if you want to include that as part of the parking plan, I think that would be absolutely reasonable.
For him to provide those, or because I don't have those.
Right, or to get access if, you know, and they set them up, but we were to get them.
I think once we meet, we can discuss what we think will work and come up with some. These areas here concern me because I don't think they're big enough and so forth. But I do think there probably are some things we could do. So thank you for that.
I think we have it in the motion that you will work together to develop that. My question was also related to parking, and it is about enforcement. Once you've developed a plan, then it needs to be, that you have people to enforce that. So you're planning to have volunteers or people that you're hiring?
And parking and organizing, so it goes pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of staff on a weekend out there, so I would not have any way to assist.
That would need to be part of your event planning. Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Tiedem.
Alan, we've had events at the airport over the years that have had a lot of people, air shows and things like that. How have you handled parking and traffic in years past?
In years past, on some of those events, we've picked a couple of these big lots that are closest to gate entrances for the air shows and things of that nature. Generally, we know well in advance that those are going to take place. And we generally will go out and mow those, knock that grass down. And a lot of times, we will mow that a second time to really minimize that fire danger of cars being on that. Presently, the grass out there in these fields, as I looked at today, is in excess of 12 inches. Some of it's 18 inches tall. So even if we mow it, there still could be some fire danger there because there is a lot of grass. We had a very wet spring.
So that will need to be addressed?
Well, I think if, he's talking about mowing the sides.
Yeah, we're going to have somebody come out there and mow it, volunteer.
Excuse me, Mr. Andres, if you could come up to the podium, if you're going to.
Yeah, if you understand.
So that people can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, I have somebody scheduled to come out there and mow it. I'd like to, we'll meet later. Maybe I can actually, we can meet on a spot and show, so he can show me how far he wants it mowed back. And maybe we even put a catcher on it. I don't have it. We can talk about that.
There's a lot out there.
Right. My thought was, if you know where you go down Piper Avenue, where you see somebody put a buffer zone there, I was thinking about matching that buffer, that same distance. Not the entire area. And then we were going to wet it down, knock the dust down at the same time.
We'll let you work this out.
The one thing that I would like to say, as we're talking about mowing, and I had some guidance from our legal, they said that they would kind of, it would probably be in our interest to make sure that whoever's mowing this does not hold us liable for any damage that they incur as they mow these, because these are not smooth grass areas. There are some concrete foundations and so forth out in there. So I want them to be aware of that.
If you guys have a waiver, I can have a fight.
Well, we definitely want a waiver of some sort from them, so.
So we will work on that. But we did have another question. Councilmember Nichols, and is this for Alan?
I have one for both of you, actually. Alan, so what are, despite the parking, what are your general feelings? Are you in support of this? It's your facility out there.
You know, we've had a number of events over the years that have wanted to do some things out there on the roads. And for the most part, they haven't developed or they were turned down for one reason or another. A lot of it was because it was going around in circles, and it was, you know, it wasn't necessarily a straightaway race. I don't know how I feel about this. I guess we'll see how this goes. If it, if I'm left with a mess and a lot of work, I'm definitely not going to be real happy about that. But, you know, we won't know that until we do it. If I have people parking all over the place and I do have some damage from that, then those will be some concerns that I definitely have. But I'm not totally in favor of this, but I'm not totally against it.
Jan, I was for more than that.
And I know that's not probably what you wanted to hear.
No, okay.
Do you have another question?
Yeah.
And I do, I have a question for the applicant here. So regarding like fire control, if, you know, the weeds were to catch on fire, are you going to have any, like a fire truck or anything, any?
I went to Forest Service. I went to the City of Pocatello. I went to Bureau of Land Management. I went to the Fort Hall Reservation, also went to Power County and American Falls trying to get a fire truck. It's the wrong season. They all said they'll bring one out here in the spring or the, after summer's over. But it's all, they're all considered taking this time of year. So as I said, what we have, we have two 400-gallon trailers, and we have a 2,000-gallon water truck. And that's what, I couldn't get a fire truck. I really tried. If you guys have some pull, that would be great. I'd love to have Pocatello Fire Truck out there. Maybe, you know, that would be wonderful. But I couldn't, I couldn't, I put some effort into it. I thought, I really thought Fort Hall was going to come through because they said they've done it before in the past, but it's just the heat and the time of the year.
Counsel.
And I have one.
One more?
Okay.
Yeah, please.
So I think it's important for you to realize, we do have one fire truck at the station, but it is specifically for aircraft fighting, and it's manned by one person. So if there were a fire, that person may be able to respond. Depends on how close to the flight coming in, whether he would do that or not. But he does not have the ability, per se, to get out and pull a hose and start to put it out. He has a truck that would squirt the water out, you know, and could be of assistance until others arrive from Pocatello. Chubbick may be able to come as well. They do generally respond out to that area, but not until after. It takes a little while, so. So that's what we have on site.
One more question? Go ahead, Councilmember Nichols.
Can I finish up the fire? Yeah, we're all about prevention. I don't want to put somebody in that position of having to fire, fight a fire. Go ahead.
All right, and then just on your map, I had a couple of questions. Part of it, mine was cut off on the legend here. So the orange number one is, that's the eighth of a mile strip.
Correct.
And then the blue, number 12, that's the run-out, I'm guessing? Okay, and then the three, the yellow one, that's like the return back to the start? Okay, that's what I think.
Yeah, I had to move that. There's a little bump in the road right there. And for safety reasons, why, I had to move that eighth mile. That's why I changed that map. We went out, the guys came over from Twin Falls, and I showed them the bump. And for safety, we're going to start after this little bump in the road. So we started. a little bit down there.
All right, thank you, that's all, go ahead.
I have another, uh, question from Councilmember Mansfield.
Just one quick comment. Um, it seems like you've put a lot of work into this, and I, I really am impressed at the thoroughness of this proposal. I appreciate that you're bringing in experts, um, and you've expressed the desire to do it right, because you'd like to be invited back or allowed to do it in, in following years. Work closely with Alan at the airport, because if he comes back next year and says this was a mess, uh, for me, it'll be a non-starter, so.
Okay.
Keep the airport happy.
No problem.
Hey, Counsel, any other questions for, uh, Rick Cheetham? I mean, Councilmember Cheetham?
You mentioned earlier you've had a lot of interest. Do you have a lot of pre-entries in these events already?
Um, I've, I've done, I've done fourteen events in Pocatello in the last two.
No, I mean, people who wanna race.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna lead you, so I'm gonna give you a comparison. Done fourteen events, this one has got the most, um, response on the Facebook event. The only one that was close to this was, uh, trunk or treat, but that was free candy. So, this is my biggest event, and I haven't paid a dollar for advertising, this is just word of mouth. I, I think there was a, definitely demand, I, if me and him were sitting here talking, look at it, I ex, I expect a thousand people and two hundred people racing. That, that's my estimate right now, if I was, if I'm booking food and I'm booking porta-potties, that's what I expect.
Okay.
I think Rick's asking where he signs up. I think Rick's asking where he signs up to race.
I found it a little presumptuous that this is already being promoted on social media as approved by the city council.
I gotta tell you, that's a really good, that's what I'm, that's what I wanna talk to you guys about. This is a long, strange trip to get to this point, and this wasn't my plan on how to get there, as I noticed, noted in the thing, I started this in December, and I went back corresponding with a group out of Idaho Falls for over a year, and we went back and forth, and I tried, and they, I thought I had them booked, they backed out, so I switched to another guy, I asked him his available dates. This is how we got to this point, where you guys approving something, I've already done advertising. So, I, so I called the second guy out of Twin Falls, and his only date available was July twenty-seventh, and this started around June first. So, he booked it, he said he can do it, I got together, I met with, uh, Mike Tolman, who's been a really good advisor on all this, he's experienced, and I met with, uh, Tom Kirkman and Mike Neville over there at the street department. We got together, we had a meeting, we talked about different places to do it, um, the one that looked the best was the airport for all the obvious reasons, then we started working on it. Let me make this clear, Mike and Tom told me that I needed to have this approved by the police, by the fire, and by the street department to go through. I felt confident that working what we were putting together, I thought it was gonna fly through, and I got the, the, the feeling from them that they were confident this was gonna go through as well. That's why we, that's why I started on it, because it was actually being put together by one of the, uh, organizations that I needed, or being helped. I was the one who did the work, they only advised. So I thought it was gonna go right through, then we got to the police, and they made a really good point. The police is there to enforce the law, not to change the law, and it's against a lot of speed on the road, and so, uh, under good advice, they were told that I need to bring it before you, and, uh, Captain Dillon said, uh, I asked him, "Do you have any issues with it?", and he says, "If the city council approves it, I don't have any issues with your traffic plan." I talked to Matt Curd, I think his name is, and I asked him directly, "Do you have any issues, is there any legal issues with this?" Took a couple of questions, he didn't wanna answer, he was a lawyer on me. So, I, I came back on him three times, and I go, "I'm gonna use your quote." So this is his quote, he said, "If", that's clear, "if the city, if the street doesn't have any issues with it, if the, if the, um, fire doesn't have any issues with it, and the police does not have any issues with it, we do not have any issues with this traffic plan." So, that's what they said, and so every, and this, I like the system, it's coming on you guys because that's what the police pass it on to, and for good reason.
Well, it's a changing code, so that does come to this body, but I think we need to move ahead and go ahead and vote on this. Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
We have a motion by, um, Councilmember Mansfield, and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Um, Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mango?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. Um, agenda item number nine is Airport Resolution and Lease Agreement for Pure Flight Poki LLC. Council may wish to accept the recommendation of staff and adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with Pure Flight Poki LLC for a twenty-six-hundred, oops, made it go away, twenty-six-hundred square foot building for the purpose of operating a flight school and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The lease will be for a five-year period and rental rate will be thirteen-hundred per month, to be increased annually according to the CPI, with a full rate review in 2026. The lease allows for rent abatement for necessary facility renovation as approved by the airport manager.
Council President, uh, I'd first like to say that it is awesome to see something like this coming into our community, and, um, a flight school in our community is, is a huge thing, and so with that, I would move to approve agenda item nine as outlined, a lease agreement with Pure Flight Poki LLC for the lease of a building, square footage of twenty-six-hundred square feet, um, authorize the mayor's signature and all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Okay, second by, so a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Paulson. And, um, Councilmember Nichols has a question for Alan Evans.
Yes.
Just wondering if you could tell us a little bit about this, uh, Pure Flight Poki, what they are, what they're gonna do, I mean, this is, I understand, might be a result of some economic development recruitment efforts, right?
Uh, so what I can tell you is, we've been working on this project for quite some time. Manic Development has really been working with its company to bring them in, um, they do some additional flight schools elsewhere in the country, and, uh, as everybody knows, as I have said many times, we have a real pilot shortage, uh, in, in that industry, and so, we believe, and they believe, as I understand, that, um, they can take these students through the program, get them the hours they need, expedite that, and get them into some good high-paying jobs, and, uh, and, and move maybe a higher number of students through than your, uh, student that generally just tries to buy their way through a little at a time as they get, you know, some funding and some extra money and, and try to, to work it that way. So, this, this should be, it's a dedicated flight school, uh, you can still learn at, uh, at, at many of the FBOs in the area and still do it that way, but this, we believe, is going to be a much more productive method for people to get into the industry, and so we're excited about that.
Great, yes. Um, so, do they start at like, the full private, uh, pilot, just a complete rank beginner, and then are there like advanced ratings and courses now?
Yes.
And how far up that spectrum can they go, all the way to commercial pilot?
I have not seen how far they can go, but they, they should be able to get their, uh, move up into their twins, I don't know if Mia Kate knows more about that, but, uh, they, there is some discussion of possibly even doing some helicopter training as well with this company, and so they may look to do that if the demand is here for that. Um, I believe that they can build their hours up to get them into, uh, into some of the, the smaller airlines, I guess, because the bigger airlines obviously need, are looking for a few more hours, but they should be able to fill a lot of that vacancy that we're having.
Council President, is it appropriate to hear from Mia Kate on?
Please.
Yes. Mia Kate, would you like to come up?
Um, so I can probably answer most of the, um, bigger questions, uh, give you a little bit more on it, we've been working on this for eighteen months, so, um, the, it's FAA approved, uh, and it's a one-forty-one flight school, so if you look at the different types of flight school certifications, there'll be, um, you know, there's one-sixty some, and then there's one-forty-one, and that means that the students follow a curriculum, they actually get a degree currently through, um, Klamath Community College, it's a science degree in aviation, and, um, so they actually have to follow a protocol. They do have availability, as Alan said, to have some training, it is a fixed wing and helicopter, so both will be offered, um, that they will allow, um, students who are, um, overseas students and foreign students are allowed also to get certified, as well as BA, and they're also eligible to get, um, financial aid and, um, loans to be able to finish flight school, and then they can come in, do their training, sometimes, um, some of the airlines that are bigger will take them and finish the training, but they'll still get their certificate through this program. So maybe they have, you know, fifteen-hundred hours, that'd be like a friend of mine, but, but probably not looking, they'd be much younger, um, and then they would take them and give them a sort of boost in, in being able to fly. Um, we are working also with ISU, um, to incorporate, 'cause right now their degree is through Klamath Community College, and that's amazing, but, um, they would do get that degree from there, which is super important.
Mia Kate, I forgot to ask you at the beginning, could you just say your name?
Yes, sorry. Mia Kate Kennedy, the first CEO for Manic Development Corporation.
Thank you. Did you have additional questions?
Well, just actually a follow-up, so, so do you know how far up the spectrum of they'll be teaching? Went all the way up to the point of a, of a airline pilot?
Right, so that's what I was saying, they will get their degree, um, and they get a certain number of hours, and then they, it's incremental, so they could actually get their hours while they're doing that process, but usually they'll either come with some hours and then they'll go all the way up. So, bigger airlines will look at these students, they have other programs like this, it just depends on what each of those students' air miles are and where they can get those at. So they have some expedited, expedited processes with the airlines, and the school will work with them to get them pilot-ready.
And then you'll be doing heli, they'll be doing helicopter as well?
Yes.
Like, right off the bat?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, they'll do helicopter, they have heli, they have the equipment currently, and they did authorize me to speak on their behalf too. Um, they're really excited to come, it's, they have four decades of flight training, uh, thousands of students that attend this, these, they have schools in Oregon as well, and they, um, it does bring a level of auditing and also FAA approval every year, that sort of helps on those, um, individual crafts that are coming in, private crafts, that currently we have, but there'll be extra eyes, um, for them. It's also good for the A and P school, because they are gonna be working with Av Center, and they want to do that too, so.
One, one final, one final thing. Yeah, it's actually just more a comment, uh, congratulations to you and Alan and everybody else who made this happen, this is great.
Thank you. It really does connect us to the, um, to the domestic and international economic market, so.
And I was gonna commend you on all your work, too, thank you for bringing this, and Rick has one more question.
I'm just curious about if, what aircraft will be ground, will be here for the school to use? Is it gonna be all single-engine, multi-engine jet, will it be IFR, BFR, what kind of training are students gonna get?
So funny they're calling in right now. Um, so, um, I believe usually when they start training, they train on something, not usually, but ones, a one-seventy-two, sometimes they'll get a one-eighty-two, they have some craft that's, uh, common in that, if you're common, I actually crashed in a one-eighty-two, so I hope they bring a different one. Um, I, I feel like, um, in the helicopter, they have a certain helicopter that they're training with, I'm, I went through helicopter school, and I honestly can't tell you what that is, um, but they will bring in additional craft as the pro, program goes, right now they currently have a use of up to four aircraft and two helicopters, and they're bringing in one craft and one helicopter right away, and then they'll bring in the others, 'cause they're responsible for that lease part, and that's, we've been at this for so long that they're currently racking up a bunch of costs when we don't have the school open yet, so.
One more question for Alan.
I might just say, in order to get these pilots where they need to be, they'll have to have some twin-engine trainers.
Yes, they'll have to have.
So those aircraft, I'm sure, I don't know if they'll start with those, it kinda depends on what their student population is, where they're at in the process.
Yeah, and then they have to have, I mean, 'cause they'll have instrument ratings and all different ratings from their trainers.
Is, is this going to create additional demand for a hangar in addition to the classroom?
Uh, I, as I understand, they're gonna work with the Pocatello Av Center to hangar their aircraft there for the time being, they would like to build a hangar, we don't have one available, unfortunately, or they probably would've taken that, um, but I think there is some interest as they grow this, to definitely have their own hangar and, and so forth, and, and maybe even a bigger facility as it grows.
Yeah, inside the hangar, a really big production, so.
The building they're leasing from is, is not a lot of square footage, but it, it works really well for this for right now, but if they grow this bigger, they're gonna need more room and probably bigger classroom space as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for the vote. We have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Hayden, um, I mean, Paulson, sorry. Um, and Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number ten, oh, before we go on, I forgot to say at the very beginning of this meeting that, um, Mayor Blatt is excused tonight, he's out of town on city business, in case you were wondering why I'm in his seat, um, but I should've mentioned that at the start, so I apologize. Um, so back to agenda item number ten, property purchase, thirty-three-four Garrett Way. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents pertaining to an offer allowing the city to purchase property not owned by a public agency, subject to legal department review. The property is located at thirty-three-four Garrett Way.
Council President?
Um, Councilmember Nichols?
Um, I move to approve agenda item number ten as listed.
Second.
And second by Mangum. So we have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number eleven, Recycled Material Hauling and Processing Services Agreement, Republic Services. Council may wish to accept the recommendation of staff and approve a recycled material hauling and processing services agreement with Republic Services to provide transportation and processing services to the sanitation department for the current city recycling program and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents su, subject to legal department review.
Council President, I would move to approve agenda item, item eleven as outlined.
Second.
Um, we have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Cheetham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. And agenda item number twelve, Bid Acceptance Award for Hawthorne Jensen Child Pedestrian Safety Contract, Pro Builders, Inc. Council may wish to accept the low-responsive bid and award the bid to and authorize a Council may wish to accept the low-responsive bid and award the bid to and authorize a contract agreement with Pro Builders, Inc. for 2023 Local Children Pedestrian Safety Program Hawthorne Jensen Pedestrian Improvement Project. That's quite the name. In the amount of 188, 100, 100, I can't say this, 188,288 dollars and 20 cents, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Council President?
Councilmember Mangum.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 12 as outlined.
Second.
I was, I decided not to.
And I heard a second from Paulson, is what I heard, okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheedham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. And Item Number 13, we have three ordinances, an ordinance A is an ordinance amending the zoning designation of approximately 29.87 acres of land, generally located along Philmeter Avenue from Commercial General CG to Industrial I. Council, how would you like to have this ordinance read?
Council President?
Councilmember Mansfield.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 13A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheedham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay, ordinance, oops, yes, I guess we have to read it. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, rezoning approximately 29.87 acres of land located west of Philmeter Avenue, east of Union Pacific Tracks, and north of Amy's Kitchen, and south adjacent to Interstate 86, Pocatello, Idaho, from zoning designation Commercial General CG to Industrial I. Said property being more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass? And I have to do that.
Cheedham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance B, an ordinance amending Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare, specifically by adding a new chapter, 9.06, called Runaways, to provide definitions and penalties for juvenile status offenses. Council, how would you like this ordinance to be read?
Council President?
Councilmember Mansfield.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 13B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheedham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes. I declare that to be, oh, nope, I keep doing it, okay. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, more specifically by adding a new chapter, 9.06 Runaways, to provide definitions and penalties for juvenile status offenses, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Thank you. Now, I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass?
Cheedham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Lorick?
Yes. Okay. C, an ordinance approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 appropriation ordinance increasing the total fiscal year expenditures in the sanitation fund by 22,700,000. That's all, sorry.
Council President?
Yes.
Oh, I guess, do you need to ask how you want it read?
Yes.
Sorry.
Council, how would you like this ordinance to be read? Councilmember Mansfield.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 13C be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance be submitted for publication.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Cheedham, okay. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield, a second by Councilmember Cheedham. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheedham?